Welcome to our October 22 meeting. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor? Mr. Wierich?
Volunteer girl soccer coach, Tiverton High School, Robert Burke, volunteer girl school soccer coach, Tiverton High School, Christine Messenger, class of 2017 advisors, Chetlin Posen and Dennis Soros, resignations, leaves of absences, resignation, grade seven science teacher, Stephen Bonfiglio, extended leave of absence, McKassett School, Liz Mera.
Okay, thank you. School policy development. Mr. Wierich?
Yes, committee has, the first policy is policy 1267. It's the second reading. It's the high school graduation waiver policy. In our last meeting, it was asked to edit the document to take out wherever the word "few" showed up, or a few in two places. I highlighted it yellow.
The only thing I was wondering, it says the, you have to be notified, the parents, if they want a waiver, they have to notify.
That's correct.
You in writing, so what if Mr. Fizette knows someone that needs one, and then they haven't notified him? Will he contact them?
No, we notify them ahead of time through the process.
Right.
The waiver team would then say to the parents in the meeting, Mrs. Smith, you're entitled, you know, we approved your waiver.
So no one could like slip through then?
No, because they're all identified.
Okay, alright.
That's going to get signaled as soon as that NECAP score comes out, end of January, beginning of February, we'll pass back to real quick. We go from Monday to Sunday, after much of the testing dates for them as well, and later we'll come up to a discussion.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There was a lot of language about it being very rare, and only when there was full eclipse.
And we talked about that.
We took that out.
Yeah, we took that out.
Yes. In relatively few cases was.
We took that all out.
Deleted.
Because that concerned us. Yeah, that was the phrase that concerned us, you know.
And I think that was actually the only time it appeared in our.
Well, there was another one in my.
Oh, there was, and you got that one too?
There was few examples, but I took it out anyway.
Okay, you did.
Just so we'd be sure that it isn't that way.
Deleted it, because obviously.
Do I have a second?
Yanni?
Okay, wait a minute, I'm waiting for Dr. Rockin. Okay, this is very important, take your time. Okay. Okay, all those.
We can continue it too.
You want us to continue it? You sure? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Bill and Steve, for work on it.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thanks, the policy subcommittee.
That's right. And now we have the next one.
Yes, the other is a policy, again, we talked about this in our last meeting. There's also an item in the agenda that says volunteer policy. It's just a brief memo, because there were a couple of questions that came up during our discussion, and I talked to Steve Associate, Attorney Bama. One of the questions was, are volunteers required to get it more than once, the BCI, and they're not, they just have to get one. They apply for it, that's it, and we keep it on file.
Perpetuity?
That's.
So why don't I make a motion to move up 7A along with this discussion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, so 7A is being moved up.
I don't have 5B in my packet. Does anyone else? Is it just me?
I think it's just mislabeled. It says 5A.
Oh. It just says 5A.
It's the last.
Oh, yep, thank you.
There was also, again, we have Attorney Robinson here. Before I did that, I believe Jerry asked for a copy of the blog. Attorney Robinson provided it to us. It was proposed. There was also a question, and there were some, many questions during our discussion, as to what activity would constitute volunteers having to get the BCI check, or have it, if they wanted to serve as volunteer. One of the, one question that did come up was the issue of school parties. Attorney Bama does not believe that they would need to have a, that the volunteers, they wouldn't have to get checked in order to attend that. So, a class party type of, so I've asked Attorney Robinson to come and try to answer any of our questions, or clarify any of the situations that we talked about.
So Stephen, it seems like it couldn't be vaguer. So we did write something in here, I think, that basically, ultimately, it's going to be, some things are cotton dried, but ultimately, we're going to leave it up to the superintendent's discretion, and I'm, that seems like that's kind of the best we can do, is to have him have a conversation with you anytime something comes up that someone questions, because there's just no way we can cover.
Right, right. It's going to be ad hoc, you know, you almost have to, because there's shades of gray on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a question. But, you know, when we reviewed the statute today before coming here, it really isn't quite as bad as my first thought was.
Okay.
Because if you, if you look at the new language for volunteers, there are really three things that have to happen for someone to come under the statute. First, the person has to be a current or prospective volunteer to the, to the school department. Okay, there's, there's number one. Number two, who may have direct and unmonitored contact with children. So that's going to remove a fair number of things, because, you know, if you're going to a.
Party.
Yeah, you know, Bill will probably say, well, there's really no unmonitored contact here, but you'd have to leave that to the superintendent, to make that determination. And the third one is on school premises. So those, all those three conditions have to be met for someone to be considered a volunteer under the statute requiring a criminal background check. So all the other things you can think of that, that wouldn't fall under it, don't require it.
What about a field trip though, where you're not on school premises, but that's a school?
We've always, we've always advocated with you, those kind of situations where someone, we think it's good policy to do it. Does the statute require it? No, it's not on school premises.
Okay.
I guess you could argue that school busts at school premises, maybe, but, you know.
Extension on school.
You might make that argument. I think it's wise to do it.
Right, because the direct and unmonitored contact with that is a much greater, I mean, because you do, you break up into groups of six or seven, and you go off with an adult volunteer.
Your parents on a bus, or you break off.
Right. You break off and you go, and you are with a small group of children, so even though you're not on school premises, so you're saying it may or, may not require it, but it's good policy.
I think it's good policy, I mean.
I agree.
Can I ask another one that's going to come up, our dances?
We knocked that issue around too. I would say.
Dances, I'm sorry.
You know, and you can almost always think of a situation, which would be an exception to the rule, but generally speaking, it's on school premises, you're volunteering, are they maybe unmonitored? Well, if these people are, you know, just in the room, under the direction of a principal, or a school administrator, and they're not going into the bathrooms, and they're not doing things of that sort, you know, I don't know, would they be monitored or unmonitored?
Well, that does kind of get to the question, what is monitoring? Is it, I am generally present in the classroom, and I may go down to the office to get something, and then come back in, and leave the classroom with the volunteer, or volunteers, or whatever? Or do you have to have eyeballs on bodice, or body of the volunteer?
And you have to almost try to put yourself in the mind of the legislature, what they were trying to protect from, you know, because, because there are situations where volunteers are alone with children. And I think that's what they had in mind. Not the, you know, teacher A has to use the facilities, and she's going for five minutes while somebody's reading to the kids, you know. I really don't think that was the intent of what they're talking about.
We did find, though, the policy subcommittee, that the other districts have taken it to that, that rather than have to.
Do what we're doing now.
Do what we're doing every single time. They basically said, if you're on school premises, you have to have it, almost without exception. We found one school that had two types of volunteers. They had volunteer level A and volunteer level B, and to me, I think that would be confusing.
If you have someone, I, when Bill and I were telling you, it was more like the concern about, well, my kid's class is having an assembly, and the parents are invited to come and watch the assembly or something.
Well, that's performance.
It's a performance, you know, they're on school, you're among children.
But they're in the audience.
Same with the part, most parts of teachers, they are, but again, with a dance, I'm thinking middle school, or middle school.
High school parents don't usually, but they do occasionally, but.
Not rarely, but the more than middle school.
Middle school, yeah.
With all the PTO programs, it's like, you know, whoever you can pull in is immediately made chair, and then you show how it works.
I mean, I chaperoned every single middle school dance while my son was there, and we, you, you go to the bathroom, you're by yourself in the room where they do the coat check, you, I mean, it's dark, you know? Dance is dark, I mean, you know, I guess I wouldn't be comfortable not having them get a BCI check at those dances, having been a chaperone for all those years at them, so.
I had a question about the frequency. Now, you feel that volunteers are not required to get an annual check, but without that, I could get the BCI check when my oldest starts kindergarten, and it could be 15, even 20 years, before my youngest graduates from high school. So is that BCI?
Let me clarify, I agree with you, Carol.
Check good for 15, 20 years?
No, I, I, I agree with you. Vicki, my associate, gave Bill her reading of the state statute. The state statute is silent. Doesn't say you have to do it yearly. So her interpretation was, therefore, you don't, once you do it, once you're done. I have the same reservation you do. I think an interpretation could be put on this. Maybe, it doesn't say yearly, but, you know.
It says 12 months prior to commencement, but then once it commences, it doesn't say.
Well, every school year is a separate entity, you know, so you'd almost, I mean, there's, I think that there's an argument the other way, Carol, as well, okay? It wasn't written well, it's not clear in the statute. Vicki's take on it was, you do it once. I'm, I agree with you. I think there should be some period of time, maybe every year is unreasonable, but maybe every couple of years.
I think, who is it? One of the C schools, Cumberland, Cranston, I don't know.
Great, there are schools who are requiring yearly.
Yearly, or they do it when you change schools, so elementary to middle, middle to high, you have to have it done.
Which also begs the question, you don't do that to the staff?
They just do it once, right?
Is that true in Rhode Island? In Massachusetts, it's every other year, you have to have it done.
You're a 30-year teacher, you probably did it 30 years ago.
Not even, because it didn't.
They didn't do it then.
Yeah, because of that grandfather.
So it's like anything else, though, I mean, we could go crazy, or we can, we just need to, you know, it was like when we went through the Newtown thing, we could put glass, you know, bulletproof glass in every school, but, you know, what, what are we trying to achieve, and it's, you know, at some point, you kind of have to, what you're going to put in place is going to outweigh the risk and the burden that you're placing on the district and the parents, so where's that middle ground?
If we had to choose frequency, I think I would be comfortable with every school. It also relieves the principles of the burden of having to get all of the paperwork from parents, and it's just when you arrive in.
So I enter into your school.
Fifth grade in your building, who's ever new in your building, the parents get informed, if you want to volunteer in this building, you need to have that on file.
That seems like a workable. The other question was, and we don't have it in here, here is. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It would be nice, because it would, you know, the term is then consistent.
Yeah.
And it's not every year, it's only four years at most, so that would make a lot of sense, actually.
Of course, then you have parents who overlap, okay? I just had the check because my child started fourth grade, and now a year later, or I, I, but I think we're just going to have to.
Be reasonable about that, Mr. Wierich.
So I think, yeah, when you, when you're first time in elementary, first time in middle, first time in high school, that when you start a new school, you have to get a check. The question also came up, Massachusetts. Because we're on the border, we have a lot of relatives who live in Massachusetts, so a Rhode Island BCI check isn't going to catch any of that. So the question was, do we make Massachusetts residents do the $35 And I think you'd have to.
Does Massachusetts not have an equivalent of our $5 check?
I don't know, I'll have to check on that.
So you're saying, for instance, if there's a grandparent who lives in Fall River, who wants to volunteer in our classroom.
Yeah, Rhode Island BCI check isn't going to do anything for that. And we do have a lot of relatives that are.
The check just includes what they've done in Rhode Island?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's how you get legislatures like we do.
Right.
So, yeah, I don't know.
They apparently knew this.
If Massachusetts has a less, like, maybe they have a $5 one, too? I don't know.
I'm not sure either.
I'll check on it.
Okay.
Yeah, and the law, of course, is silent on that. What if your volunteer is not a Rhode Island resident?
We can require whatever we want.
Right.
You just have to, we just have to meet the minimum of what the statute states. If we want a three-year, or a four-year, we know we can put that down, if we want to say, the committee would like to say, any out-of-state volunteers have to go through the full thing.
The Cory.
We just say it.
Yeah.
We just put it in.
But if this is.
If that's the law.
Rhode Island, Ireland, makes this whole thing completely meaningless, it's just a checker box to meet the statute.
Correct.
What do you mean? The check.
But if someone did something in Connecticut, and moved to Rhode Island, this is not going to be indicated.
Unfortunately, no, you're right, that's.
Right.
You're right.
So what are we checking?
Oh, that's what they've done.
Yeah, Cumberland, Cumberland actually says, if you haven't lived in Rhode Island for the previous five years, and makes them sign something that says, I, you know, that they, you know.
It's the legislature that's making us do it, not.
Well, that's what I mean, so in this sense, the teachers, some of them don't have to do it, or if they have to do it, it's once for a lifetime.
Or if they move to.
For employment.
For employment.
Or if they move to another district.
But they do a Cory check, they do the national one. They don't do just the Rhode Island.
But if a teacher moves in Rhode Island from one district to another.
They have to redo it.
They do it.
Right.
But once, if you stay in a district for 20 years, you like to do it.
So basically, what we are doing is something just to meet the statute, unless we want to get serious about it.
Yes, in a way, if we're doing it because we are compelled to by the statute. I think there's probably some point to it, but whether or not it's going to be an absolute ironclad guarantee that, you know, this person has done nothing, it's as good as we make it, and within reason.
Right.
And this law says if you've been in the school department in Rhode Island the past 12 months, you're exempted. It also says you have to have fingerprints.
For employee.
Paragraph B.
For employees, that's not the volunteer piece, yeah.
Because they asked that last week.
It does.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, last week, somebody asked us that.
So, by and large, just aside, misdemeanors tend not to be disqualifying circumstances.
Right.
The disqualifying are sexual crimes, major felonies.
Oh, okay.
Things of that sort.
I reserve the right to deny anybody, anyway.
Right.
To serve as volunteer.
That's your best filter, while you're in education. It's always, it's always the savvy administrator who said, nah, not, nah.
Do we specifically state that?
I do it anyway. I don't, I've never had a policy, but at least since I.
No one, no one has a right to volunteer.
Well, that's true.
So the outstanding questions are, it doesn't really have to be done every year. There's another one you were going to go back to.
Massachusetts.
What does Massachusetts do?
What is Massachusetts doing, and do we require out-of-state residents to then either do the Rhode Island one, or do the analogous Massachusetts one, or do a national one?
Or do a national one.
I will tell you this, the statute does not require every year. I think Carol's point is well-taken one.
Right.
And I agree that, you know.
Right, yeah, I guess I'm getting more to how we would have to rewrite the policy.
Yeah.
If we were going to.
You could probably do, I think the superintendent would probably be empowered to do an operational memorandum, you know. You don't have to get into the weeds too much in the policy.
Well, it's not, I mean, we don't have to finalize it, we can have a, have Bill put something in.
No, no, I know that, I'm just kind of wondering about that.
And like I said, I, there is language in one of the other districts where they do deal with out-of-state districts. I can't, off the top of my head, remember what it is, but I certainly could send that to you.
We can, we can modify it, and then just bring it back for another reading.
Right.
We can add the three-year cycle, or sort of four.
Four-year cycle.
Right, although then it just occurred to me, what about volunteers who do not have a child in the, in the district? And, you know, maybe their, their children have all graduated, and yet they come in to volunteer.
Well, that would be like our grandmother's program, we would require.
So how often?
Because they.
The first time they're volunteering in that school.
Right, and then in perpetuity?
No, and then if they're going to volunteer in the middle school, and they haven't before.
Well, no, but how about they just volunteer for 10 years at the elementary level?
Yeah.
Just, I would put a timeline, I'd just say, four years.
Instead of when you.
Or three years, whatever the committee feels appropriate.
Right.
Just put a time period on it.
Okay.
That covers everybody.
Yeah, right, it's easier, too.
It's simpler to enforce. And I would address Carol's question, though.
Right.
Somebody just stays there.
And then I guess it does, does the policy need to clarify more specifically what is a volunteer, in terms of the parent that's just coming in to help out for the class party versus, or you just want to leave it as big as the law?
No, because I think, I think if you start, yeah, I think if you start doing that, you're going to miss something, or someone's going to be confused, I think you just have to, you know, superintendent's the final arbiter of what it is or isn't. Because if we start trying to outline, that's why that one that tried had a volunteer A and a volunteer B was super confusing. It was like, really, am I this, or am I that?
Where do I fit?
Yeah.
Okay, so do you want them?
And we did have a comment, like I said, from a couple of the principals did write us and comment, and say, from their perspective, it was easier if you're in the building, you need the check.
Right.
You don't care if you're making copies, or if you're reading, it's just.
What's the purpose of your volunteer visit?
It's here to implement that way. And you just say, if you're working, you need the, you know, if you're in the building.
I think that was the comfort level, is just, anybody that was in their building, they were just more comfortable knowing that if they were walking around, or using the ladies' room, or in the lunchroom, or whatever it was, that they had a $5, you know, check.
So it seems to me, it would be helpful if we could create a district database with the list of the volunteers, and the date that their last check was, so that, for instance, if the check was done when the child was in third grade, they were new to the district, then the middle school could look up that parent and say, oh, they had a check within two years, so they're cleared to volunteer this year.
Definitely have that due to that.
So, Al, that's.
We'll have to have something to track.
So it's an online database, you put in the individual's name, and it comes up with the date of the last check.
And it just rolls up like this?
Yeah.
Just roll the data forward. It is created.
Swansea has, Swansea has a more complex system, where when the volunteers check in, they show an ID, it's scanned, and picture comes up, everything comes up, they have their background check, so every time you're in the building.
So they're issued a photo ID?
Yeah.
With a barcode or something that Eric?
Yeah, that's not this, but there are systems that do that. But I talked to someone in Cranston, because they have this policy in place, and we'll create a database.
Yeah.
That they can access.
So how frequent do we want Bill to write in? Three years, four years? What's the consensus?
I think every four years. Chances are, even if you do it as a, when your child is in kindergarten, and then it's, you'd still be okay.
And then you can put the mass language in, depending upon Stephen's research.
Then you're good through 11th grade, and generally, you don't volunteer their senior year. Well, no, I take that back.
Hey!
I take that back. You don't go in to read to them anymore. When they're seniors.
I just don't volunteer where you can actually see me.
Right, yeah.
Should the policy include some area, or some phrase that gives Bill the right to sort of?
Something like that. Volunteering is a, is not a, is a privilege, not a right, and all final decisions shall be subject to the superintendent's ruling, or something like that.
Yeah, all volunteers are, you know, all volunteering is at the discretion of the superintendent.
Exactly, something like that.
Sounds good.
So we'll just continue that to the end.
Volunteer approval, is that the expression?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. So you'll bring that back?
I'll submit it to the Carolus League of Chief.
Chief editor, and a corrector.
Address the corrector.
Okay, that sounds good.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Linda Larson from the Tiverton Education Foundation. I left two handouts at your table. The first one is just kind of a reminder for folks out there, who we are. Tiverton Education Foundation is a filed 501(c)(3) not-for-profit. We're a group of volunteers, of parents, local businesses, residents, educators, who are committed to the principle that all children in Tiverton Public Schools deserve an enriching school experience. Our mission is to raise funds through donations, grants, and fundraisers to be used for unbudgeted and enrichment programs within the schools in Tiverton, in order to stimulate student academic achievement, and enrich their learning environment. And our mission is, we're committed to uniting our community, and collaborating with local resources, to make a positive difference in the lives of our students. So as you can see, the next handout that I gave you is some of the things that we've done throughout the community this past year, just to list a few, to trying to build those relationships and those resources, and that, I don't know, that bridging of our community from both sides. So we sponsored TouchaTruck for the Library Street Fair. We sponsored and was very active in Celebrate Tiverton and the Celebrate Tiverton Parade. We were also a sponsor, we volunteered at the Tiverton Athletic Department 5K Road Race. Yearly now, we've helped out at Tiverton High School with the Newport County College Fair, which happens to be this Thursday, here in the gymnasium, from 5:30 to 7:30. And what our role in that is to kind of just grab out to our businesses and our parents, and we sponsored the admissions representatives dinner here for over 100-plus admission reps that come in from all over, so we provide them dinner before they head out into the gymnasium to meet the students and families. We were, we supported, and we were there for the evening for both the junior post-prom as well as the senior post-proms, and lived to tell about it till 6 o'clock the following morning. We're active in the Tiverton Prevention Coalition and some of their events at Parton Gray and whatnot, and we try to attend their meetings. And we've also been involved and sponsored some of the things going on with the Tiverton After-School Arts Program. Some of the partners that we've had, and we kind of either make you aware, or anyone who's watching aware is, we do work with organizations that may want to create a fundraising opportunity for a particular department, a school, and we will partner with them in their efforts. One organization that we've done this with is Parents as Partners. Another one that we've recently teamed up with is the Tiverton Hall of Fame, and we've been monitoring and administering the Anthony Repose Educational Trust Scholarship, and to date, we've given out $8,000 in scholarship awards to the high school seniors. TEF Grants, donations, and fundraising for 2013, you'll see the total there, $10,810. That was a grant very generously given to us, once again, by Tiverton Power. We've developed a great relationship with them, and even with the new owners, I'm told that they're very community-minded, so we're very grateful for that. Within that grant, we've been able to purchase an iPad for the history department, also given some money for apps to place on the iPad for Smithsonian, things like that. We've purchased two laptops, two LCD projectors, and two hover cams and carts for the math department, so now there's three setups within the math department, so they no longer have just one cart that they're shuffling around and sharing between the different rooms and the teachers. World Language and Science, we've purchased LCD projectors, two for World Language and two for Science, as well as the mounting kits, and those are in the process of being installed and the sealing, whatever process that happens to take. And we're still working with the Green Energy Club Initiative out of the tech ed department, and those funds right now are being escrowed until the program becomes developed and we see, you know, what needs are there for those funds. Probably one of the, I don't want to call it the greatest purchase, but the greatest, I think, impact that we've made as far as purchasing something in terms of technology for the school, has been the 3D printer. And I know we've heard, you've heard a little bit about it, and Sally's worn her bracelet, and Zach's been here. But I've left a car in front of Mrs. Black, and that happens, you can show it.
It's hidden behind your sign now.
And what the students have done is, they've created, they've designed, produced, created a car from the 3D printer, and you'll see the CO2 cartridge hanging on the back of it. About two years ago, the Tiverton Education Foundation purchased a CO2 launcher for tracks, and now they've been able to incorporate that piece of equipment with the new use of technology. The 3D printer is being used across all of the engineering classes, and it's really caused quite a buzz, not only with the students, but with teachers and administrators, just kind of seeing what the children can produce down there. He is also taking it a step further, and they're gonna be doing a sailboat through the 3D printer, and they're gonna be having some sailboat races in a made-up canal with an industrial fan, and the engineering class is gonna then be taking what the students learn and then kind of tying it into Mr. Phillips's boat-building program. So that's really, that's really been a great purchase, and a great tie into a prior purchase, and has really caused great excitement down there for the students. 2012, you can kind of see what the grants and donations, as well as 2011 and 2010 and prior. So a total year-to-date is $76,978.40, and if you include our scholarships, we're $84,978.40 since the Tiverton Education Foundation became, was developed and organized back in, I would say, 2005.
Thank you, wonderful.
Yeah, so I will make a motion to formally accept all of the donations from the Tiverton Education Foundation to our schools for the last 12 months.
Can I second that? Any questions? No, are those in favor? Okay, thank you so much for all the hard work you do.
Thank you for all your work.
Ride's Wi-Fi proposal?
Yes, we've talked about this at previous meetings, Ride's initiative, they have $20 million that the General Assembly approved for school districts to install Wi-Fi capacities in their, all the schools around, whether or not Berkeley School gets that funding, it remains to be seen, but we are in the process of, we've already had the vendors come through, that were pre-approved by Ride and their committee, that oversees this project. Every committee or every district that wants to apply has to follow the same process. You get to pick three vendors to come in, and then the committee needs to pick a vendor, and then we notify Ride to say we would like this vendor, and then Ride decides whether or not they will approve our request.
And would Ride then reimburse us for the entire amount?
They, there's no reimbursement, they would, my understanding is it would be money.
They would pay for it. Hard to argue with that.
So you just need the approval of the vendor selection today?
Yeah, Al's recommending Envision, I believe, has the, he's here to answer any questions, he thinks that's the best proposal that has the best chance to pass.
I do have a question. Do you have any idea how much slower the download speeds will be when students are running off the wireless connection rather than being hardwired? I know in my school, it's significantly slower, and so we encourage students not to use the wireless if we have a whole class in the lab.
Well, they haven't done the actual calculations based on the equipment, but it will be slightly slower than the hardwired systems, but they make up for it on the backend. The fiber optic, we run one gigabyte, or one bigabit is the speed right now in the building, and without going through all three of these big things, more or less, it'll be a 10 gig between the wiring closets, and then based on how many devices are on each access point, will determine how fast or how slow. The point of this whole project is to, most districts will say we have Wi-Fi. For example, we'll say we have Wi-Fi here in the high school, however, we don't have a true robust system that is being proposed, we have a couple of access points that aren't really designed to handle multiple devices. The point of this project is to put in the capacity that can handle up to, the rating for this that Ride's designed is for 25 devices in each classroom on all at once. It's a very ambitious lofty goal. I venture to say we probably won't hit 25 in each classroom, I just don't see them, I don't see any proposal doing that, I mean, it'd be $20 million, it's not gonna be enough for the entire state, but this would be a significant, significant improvement.
So you have Wi-Fi, but then it's slower, is that the trade-off? I guess I'm not following.
It's, well, wireless is traditionally slower than hardwire. But this wireless will be fairly close to our existing wire.
What we do now?
Yes, it's gonna be slower, it's not gonna be perfect, but it'll be a vast improvement.
But will it be fast enough to allow students to use it for, say, park testing?
Yes, the design, the specifications for design, as much as I'd like to sit here and say that Ride designed this just for our benefit, it is designed so that you, the area of capacity, that's the big discussion, capacity is two different, well, three different issues. One is devices, two is connectivity, which is what we're dealing with, and the three is the internet speed coming to the buildings. Our internet speed will increase next year, prices have gone down because of market fluctuations, so we'll make up for that and be able to get an additional bandwidth in each of the buildings.
Oh, good.
Ride has supplemented the grant that runs that, the RideTeef grant, I've talked to Mr. Fiore about that for next year, and we'll be discussing it further when the budget comes up, but it will be negligible, incompatible, so the speed of the internet coming to the building will be increased. Compounded with this, our biggest concern going forward, I believe after this, would be what devices, what's the appropriate layout?
Right.
This would be a big step moving forward.
Lines are such a, I mean, the three bids aren't anywhere near.
It's kind of open for interpretation, the way the specifications are written, so. Yes, so without going into each interval to one, from a local perspective, as I wrote in the memo, we're supposed to look at the gist from what vendor we would like to use. Obviously, taking into account, is it gonna meet our minimum need? All three vendors have a certification sheet that they review and have to certify that it will meet all of the specifications. All three vendors have done that. I've had discussions with Ride in my role as Technology Director for Tiverton, but also in my role on the Advisory Committee. They vary, there were questions from Ride about the top-listed vendor Genesis, and while I certainly look at it and like the fact that they have more wireless access points, that WAP, total number of WAPs, wireless access points, and they have some other software that I like, I'm recommending Envision, I've heard positive things about all three vendors, I've heard a lot of positive things about Envision, they seem to have a good balance with the wireless access points, their cost structure seems to fall in line with what Ride looked at, and you have to keep in mind, I'm not just recommending to you the vendor for what I think will do a good job, and will have the appropriate capacity, I also have to keep in mind that if I recommend to you a vendor and we sent it to Ride, and then they say, for example, they've already had questions on Genesis, that might slow the process down, and I don't think from, even though we're not supposed to take it from this perspective, I think from a cost-benefit analysis, we're better off taking Envision than Genesis, because I think it's gonna lead to more questions and a delay of the process.
Which is actually my next question, so what if they don't like our vendor, would that throw us out of the running because we picked the wrong vendor, or?
No, they would send it back and say, you know, we'd have to justify, you know, why, you know, we liked them. I've had, it's not a blackout, I talk with them regularly, I go for the meetings regularly, so I'm fairly in tune with what we're dealing with. Their initial concerns were the cost with Genesis, they have not had any concern with Envision or Apex at all, so, and they said if I really dug into what Genesis had, but I think at this point that the best recommendation would be Envision, they seem to have the appropriate capacity built in. Again, they've been highly recommended, I've talked to other school districts that they've worked for that have built wireless applications, and I think we're not gonna have any problems with forwarding them on. As a matter of fact, if it's approved this evening, we already have a date scheduled for October 30th to have our review with Ride, and then maybe one more subsequent review, and then from there, they will kind of lay out what the financing option is, how it is. I believe, is they gonna cut the check directly? If not, they'll be talking with Mr. Fiore, if it's, if they approve it, you know, we pay it and then they reimburse, I'm not sure, but the finance department up there will be talking with Mr. Fiore for sure.
Is it possible that they will all properly finance this?
It's my understanding, based on the way we structured the RFP at the state level, that they will fund, as long as they've certified that they're putting wireless access points in educational areas. So I've been very specific when I met with the vendors to show them that, the example I'll give you is, there is an educational area next to the gymnasium. The gymnasium, the auditorium, and the cafeteria are not considered educational instruction areas, even if you have group meetings there or whatnot. The music department is, so that justifies putting a wireless access point there. So I had to speak with Ride and explain to them, and we gave them the map layouts, that there is one classroom over here, and that's why they have to justify putting wiring over there. So they very much have reviewed all of this. These sheets that you have in your packet are from Ride, they're not developed by me, this is developed by their review team, and they will, it's my understanding that they will review the entire packet, as long as a room doesn't, isn't disqualified based on that criteria, which I don't believe anything we've submitted falls outside that criteria, we'll have the entire package funded.
So if there's $20 million, and we're, our vendor, or our bid, the bid that we're gonna, just on that bid, it's $200,000, that's 1% of the 20 million?
Yes.
Does that stand us a better chance, is, are we 1% to stay?
Well, they've not distinctly set it to districts, I believe it's almost a first-in, first-out scenario. There are districts that, believe it or not, have not applied for this. They did not, they did not submit the proposals on time, there were certain requirements, you had to have at least three quotes, you had to have them done within a certain time period, you had to meet certain specifications, all of that had to be done, pre-qualified and in place, and I believe it was, let's see, the June 30th, the July 30th, it slips in my mind right now, it had to all be in by then for them to stop making the decisions. I know we were the first district to open the bids at Ride back in August, if you recall our last discussion, even though we weren't allowed to talk about them for a month till we figured out the status on them, but we are one of the first districts going forward with it. Not the first, there's a few others, and they're now scheduling other, you know, meetings with other districts to move forward. So I think we have a very good chance, if that's what you're trying to get.
It's a possibility, I would assume anything's possible. I think because we were one of the earlier districts to get in, or make our request, hopefully they'll.
Because everything's in that they asked for. So do I need a motion?
Second.
Are those in favor? Thank you, Al. Mr. R, next one.
This is the RFP for somebody to study, I submitted a draft request for qualifications to look at both the cooling issues at the elementary school, at elementary schools, as you can see, it's on the front page, cooling or air conditioning for all areas of range of the cast of, for part in elementary schools, refurbishment and upgrading of the Tiverton Middle School and High School. The rest of the request, that's the advertisement, then the request itself specifically goes through what we're looking for. If you go to section five, section 5.0, proposed scope of services, you see it's broken up into two parts, one is the elementary school issue with the cooling question, or issues, which is 5.2, and there's a cross schedule, what we would expect as far as options, and then 5.3 is the middle school and high school, so it's, we would be asking, what we're asking for is a company to be able to provide us information in these two areas, and then, you know, we'd be able to start making decisions with the analyzer for, whoever gets chosen, we analyze it, and figure out how we want to proceed with those two matters.
Throughout the script, it says the owner, the owner, the owner.
It's us.
We are, are we not the owner?
We are the owner.
We are not the owner?
But we are, we are the owner.
We are?
This is just for the sake of the proposal.
Yeah, the language, we are defined as the owner.
The town's the owner.
Right, it's just.
For the purposes, yes, for the purposes.
Okay, all right.
I'm not sure why we didn't say investigate report options to provide cooling and or air conditioning to the entire facility, or portions thereof for the entire district. Like, I'm afraid there's like a focus of, let's fix the cooling at the elementary school, and oh yeah, then just do the rest for the middle and the high school.
My understanding from the conversations was, one, we wanted to delineate the elementary schools, we needed that addressed, then if they're looking at the other two buildings,
Would come into that?
We can add, we can specify, I mean, there's nothing in either.
We can do whatever you guys want, but I think my point was last time, that I don't think we can carve out and say, let's fix the air conditioning at the elementary schools, and eh, if we fix it at the middle school and the high school, we have issues cross district, and I think we should approach it that way.
I think we could change the language in one, then, for cooling or air conditioning for all or areas of all five schools.
Or maybe just change two. I mean, I don't have a problem leaving one like it is, but maybe change two, because my fear is, it's just not gonna have the same focus, and like I said, you know, I don't have a problem leaving one like it is, because I do think we need.
I gotta ask, what page are we on?
I was looking at the very first page advertisement.
I mean, I don't have a problem with one, it was more, I didn't think, like, maybe two could say, investigate report options to provide cooling or air conditioning to the entire facility, in addition, investigate report options to refurbish, upgrade, renovate, improve, and or replace.
So I guess the way I took this was, that we don't need to do anything after the elementary schools, other than address the cooling and.
Right, yep, that's why I said I have no problem with one.
And that, two, refurbishment and upgrading of the middle school and high school, is an umbrella that includes everything.
Can I add to that?
Except that if we've agreed that the heat situation is an immediate health danger, then certainly we should be addressing the heating and the cooling at the middle and the high school as urgently as we are at the elementary schools before, say, fixing, you know, flooring, or fixing, you know.
Well, I don't think that we have any sense of where we're gonna fall on the priorities once we have the information from.
In order to, from the report, can't we just add on to number two?
Which is?
Refurbishment and upgrading of the, including, or to include, cooling or air conditioning options for each school.
The only, the only reason why I think it may be better to include it under number one is because we wanted the report back on cooling options quicker, so that, we want the, so that would be number one, short-term, and we want cooling options for all five schools, and then we understand it may take longer to walk through the middle school and high school and document the many issues that may need to be addressed in those two buildings.
I guess the issue there is that the cooling of the, addressing the cooling issues for the middle school and the high school. I guess the, the issue there is that the cooling of the, addressing the cooling issues for the middle school and the high school are an integral part of the entire process of the facility study. And so you may, I guess, delay knowing the, the, knowing more, or delay the study of the cooling in the elementary schools. Although it, all of this should happen.
This will all come at the same time.
Yeah.
You're gonna get one report.
I think just adding that will make it a little bit more.
You're gonna get, just so you're clear, you're gonna get one report.
All right. So we're not going to get the first, the cooling report first.
The first piece, number one. And number two, in order to be clear, I think we can simply, I mean, I have no problem adding.
Just put that in.
To address what Dick is saying, to say.
Just put it in.
That we want, also, when you're doing that part, when you're looking at the middle school and high school.
Make sure you understand cooling is an issue.
Include this in those findings.
Right.
Yep.
Right? Is that kind of what we're.
Yeah, I guess that's it. I, I just don't want it to be, you know.
So can I, cause I'd like to get this out.
Yeah.
So if someone can.
Maybe, what was it? Investigate and report options to.
I'm sorry, I'm on number two.
At the end of sentence, at the end of number two.
Yep.
Just add including cooling or air conditioning, period.
I'm gonna say in each building, just so that. For each building, just so that. Cooling or air conditioning.
And. I did not see any indication, um, how quickly we wanted the report back.
Yeah, November 7th is the walk through.
Okay.
And I believe we're looking for November 28th, on that page, it has to be turned in. I did the second last one.
Yeah, November 7th, I saw that.
November 7th.
November 20th. See it?
Should be here.
I don't.
Said has to be turned back, no later than 2:00 PM on Wednesday, November 20th.
What page is that, Carol? I mean, so. I've got the date.
November 20th, at, at 2:00 PM.
What, I don't have that one.
You don't have that?
Do you see that on?
Right after this page.
Is it before or after proposals?
Up at the top, right after the page we were just changing, that had a one and two, right at the very top.
Oh, there you go. Um, yes, but it didn't say, so once we award it, how long does the company have to report back to us with our options for cooling?
You would get the proposal. You're gonna get companies to bid on this.
Right.
Oh, so they need to tell us, and that may come into play of who we accept.
The companies are gonna.
Or who does recommend.
We're asking for companies to, to do the work.
Right.
Give us a price.
So we're gonna get the first look at what it's gonna cost to do what we're requesting. The 20th, I don't know if you want to meet that, the week of Thanksgiving, but that's the next meeting, the 26th. I think it'll be 25th, somewhere in November. Otherwise, it'd be the first meeting in December, depending on what you want to do. You would get the first, you would get the prices.
Right.
And could we.
But did they include then in their proposal with the price?
To do the study.
Estimated completion?
Estimated completion time. For, for instance, you know, if we award it, say we award it in November or December.
When will it be back?
Or we want the, at least the cooling information certainly in a month. We said we were hoping to have it by January or February.
Or since we want it as part of this budget cycle, should we include in our RFP?
We're not, we're not gonna keep it, we're not gonna get the complete study by March.
Right.
Right, that's why I'm.
That's simply not gonna happen. For the high school and the middle school.
Right.
Yes. I think you just want. We're gonna. When we get the requests.
Yeah, I, I think it's important that we keep that in mind, you know.
But I guess, but the question is, if we're gonna want our cooling by a certain date, we should tell them that when they're, when putting the RFP out there.
Right.
Cause they may not want to bid saying, we can't get it in time.
Whatever the committee would like to add. I would add a seven after six on page.
There are no page numbers.
There's no page numbers. That's why I didn't say what page it was.
So after number six, where it talks about that it has to be in at November 20th, I would add a number seven. The expectation is if there's studies with, when, you know, when the bid is accepted, that the study would be completed within three months of the acceptance.
But I think Bill's saying that's not gonna happen. They might be able to do the cooling.
On the cooling, maybe not quick.
You can, I don't, and I'll double check with Mr. Smalley, who knows more about it than I do, but.
So two months for the.
I think you can specify.
Within two months for the elementary school.
I think for the elementary school.
Elementary school, yeah.
Ask for two months from accepting the.
The bid.
The bid. Or from bid award. From bid award, we expect, we expect a solution within two months, you know.
For number one. For the school, it would take four, six months for that. No?
I'm only one person. So you guys are fine with that.
Now, what is it, Deb?
I just, I have an issue with breaking up the middle school and the high school cooling issues from the elementary. I think we need to look at it as one district. I don't think we give priority to one set of schools and not look at the heating issues in the other two schools.
Or cooling.
Because there's, there's more to it. Because if you, if you specify separately, then you might get one approach and one set of data. Because here we are asking that we want to hear about scope, initial operating, and lifecycle costs for each option suggested. Now, for high school, we might get, the buildings are so old that it's not cost-effective to put any kind of earnings or whatever it is. This only reasonable suggestion from engineering perspective is to put air conditioning system. So now you're comparing apples to oranges.
Yeah. And, and we're asking for two different sets of information, really, so it's, it's impossible not to break it out.
See, I guess I, I don't, didn't think we were. I understand we need a facility study. And we said, as long as we're gonna, as long as we're gonna ask for a facility study, let's look at the middle, middle school and the high school because there are other issues besides the cooling.
We have to look at the whole district globally. I agree with that.
Right.
But I think the people that are doing this work really do have to look at it very separately because we have three schools that are either very new or recently renovated.
Right.
And so that's gonna be one type of job without, you know, being an expert at this thing. Whereas you've got two schools that are decades old, that haven't had any substantial renovation. That's gonna be a very different set of problems. And I'm not saying that we, we treat the stu, the schools or the students differently because they all have the same sort of needs for, I guess, environmental control. But if we want to be able to get the information for at least the elementary schools in a timely fashion that we were talking about earlier.
Well, I guess that's my question, Dr. Larkin, is why do we, why is the heating and cooling at the elementary schools such an urgent issue? But you don't feel the heat, the cooling at the element, at the, at the middle school and the high school?
No, I, I recognize that we can get one set of information within one time period, and it will take longer to get the other information.
But we don't know that.
We don't know that.
And how much longer? It may just be two weeks. You know, they may spend a week in the middle school and a week in the high school evaluating cooling options. So I, I think we could just, if we're back on requests for qualifications, Tiverton School Committee, for number one, investigate and report options to provide cooling or air conditioning to the entire facility or portions thereof at the Ranger, Fort Barton, and Pecassett Elementary Schools and at the Tiverton Middle School and Tiverton High School, period. And then we ask that section one, um, of the report be completed within two months from bid award.
But will they be able to tell us anything about the cooling and heating at the high school and middle school without doing the entire study?
Well, the cooling.
The cooling, yeah. I guess that, that's.
Well, why, why wouldn't they?
Right. That cooling is separate from whether our boiler, boiler needs to be replaced.
Roof needs to be fixed, or it's a completely separate issue.
Well, I think, I think that they all, all these types of systems start to pump into each other.
The high school and the middle school are unique in that they're age. And we're asking.
Well, yes.
But we're asking for them to look at all the whole school, both schools. And they're gonna also then be saying, they're gonna come, someone mentioned it. The question of whether, whether or not it's even worthwhile should come out of this report to even put it in. I, I just.
Worthwhile being.
I'm not an expert in construction. I'm not sure. I'm hoping we can get one report. Now, the more I'm hearing, do you want to just RFP the cooling separate from the facilities?
That's kind of how it sounds. That would be the easiest.
Cause that's what I'm, I'm hearing.
Let me just, let me just use two an example. We are going to get a comparison, putting film on the windows in all the elementary schools versus putting, um, inside of the room, air conditioners for the middle school, for, for all the elementary schools. And no comparison what the same solution in the particular section of the high school costs. Because this is out of question here. It makes no sense because we have to put air conditioning to address it. Where, where it will solve the same problem on somewhat temporary basis in older buildings because if you do a film in that room in a high school versus in a new room over there, this, this is exactly the same solution. The only problem is that maybe we will be ripping the walls here five or six years from now. And, and the problem is that a lot of these things which will stem from this facility studies, we might not be able to afford for a very long time. That's true.
But that's, that's my issue. So we're saying that regardless of the cost of everything else that we need to do in the middle school and the high school, we're gonna address the cooling at the elementary school immediately. We're gonna just let everything up. That's what I just heard.
We have to compare.
No, no.
That we have to look at the cost.
Of course, we have to look at the cost. But all's, all's we're really talking about right at the moment, I think, is in the request for proposal, giving them some sense of when, if they are awarded the bid, we would like the information from them. If we say two months, it sounds like it's too big a job.
For everything.
For everything.
Right.
Which is why Carol's suggestion was to do just the cooling.
For all five schools. That would be another way of doing it. I just, and again, without being an expert at it either, my sense of, just from being a homeowner, is that once you start talking about one system in a building, it tends to bump into the other systems. Whereas you're really just talking about, for the elementary schools, because they are so new, we're really just talking about the cooling. But maybe they can do it.
So then maybe we just wait until we have everything before we discuss any of it.
It could be. That'd be another.
That's the other way to go.
Well, that, we wait until we get the full facility study with priorities before.
The full facility study before we do anything.
And so that's, that's going back to the other option of saying, giving them the timeline for the whole job.
Well, that's what this is designed to do. It's, it's designed to look at both, the cooling at the, I'd ask Greg, how can we, we wanted to make it important to whoever was bidding on this, that there's, there's two important issues. You could put refurbishment of upgrading middle school and high schools, number one. It was just, that's how it came out, and that's how it was typed. Point is, these are both equally important.
Right.
Right.
And the report will, I thought it would be easier for us to look at it in that manner. Not to say one's more important, but to say, here's our facilities issue at the middle school and high school, and here's the issue that we were talking about at the elementarys. But we're also gonna clarify that we want the cooling as part of that study for both the high school and the middle school.
But didn't you just say you didn't think we could get the full study by March?
I don't.
And, and we.
I don't think you can. I mean, I can check with Greg to ask what's, what's realistic.
And, and I mean, we sat here at that meeting with those parents and said we were gonna deal with this cooling before it gets hot again.
Well, I think, well, first of all, this, this is, we are dealing with it. We're trying to figure out what to do.
But you may have to go through a couple more day, like it may be the hot days in June, we don't have a solution.
Well, I would rather have us get this right.
Yes.
No, you're right.
Then I'd rather wait two weeks. And even if I have to have Smalley come, ask him to come and answer your questions, I will. But I want to make sure we're right in what we're asking and what everyone's, if we're comfortable with what we're asking.
And I guess that was my issue, is carving out one little piece and not just looking at it as.
I don't think we know what the highest priority is gonna be because we don't really know what we're sitting on in a sense. And maybe that, you know.
You can't ask, you, you can say, you can't ask for a facility study of three buildings that are brand new. That's just a waste of time.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
So you have to clarify, what do you want to look at in those new elementary schools? That's what number one does.
I think that's why you separated them, because they're brand new.
Yep, I agree.
And then number two, if we clarify, as we were talking about, to say, when you look at company X or architectural firm B, or whoever comes, when you're looking at the high school and the middle school, you also have to include.
All this other stuff.
Air condition, the cooling question. So don't leave that out when you're telling us we need to do windows and new roofs.
I think I have a compromise, which is, how about if we make seven, that as part of the request for proposal, or as part of the bid, that they give us some sense of the timeline of the.
Work requested.
Work requested, and when the report would be expected.
For anticipated completion.
Timeline of work requested and anticipated completion? Or how did you wanna run that?
Anticipated.
Timeline of anticipated completion of report?
Of work request.
Timeline of work requested and when, and final report available.
Yeah, whatever, Greg, yeah. Tell them what we're.
When the work is put a timeline for anticipated deadlines for completion of project.
He knows that.
So if one says we can do it, you know.
Right.
Estimate. I will double check with him. What we'll say is.
You and, you and Doug.
Put the timeline for anticip.
Doug's written enough for these.
Put timeline for anticipated completion of project.
Yep, that sounds good.
The draft report and final report.
Just so unclear.
Compromise accepted, Doug.
Completion of project and submission of final report.
One and two don't get changed on the first page of the resume.
I, I think we're gonna add.
We added including cooling and air conditioning.
Air conditioning in each building at the end of two.
Yeah, so it's.
And submission of final report.
Six, what, seven?
Right, yeah, it's seven, through the timeline.
Include a timeline of anticipated completion of project and submission of final report.
Okay.
Um, I did have just one question on 4.3 under project description. Tiverton High School, I believe, was constructed in the 1960s, not the 1970s, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's at that, it's 1966.
Yeah.
You got that confused. You got that confused with the middle school.
I'd like to raise a hand if you were born then.
I was born before.
My goodness.
This building was there.
I know that.
I was born around the time of the town hall in Tiverton.
Lincoln was president, wasn't he?
Yeah. All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the RFP as amended.
As amended. Okay. Any other questions? Everybody's good? Allos in favor?
That's why you.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Uh, we have a request from Mrs. Mitchell to start a science club at Tiverton Middle School. I've attached a brief little word of this program by the tail, and Mrs. Mitchell's here to answer the questions. Yeah, Mrs. Mitchell? Is she here? Yes.
She is. Okay, well, I, I think it's wonderful to offer more after-school activities for our students. I just want to confirm that the club's open to all students who are interested? And there's no cost to students?
Nope.
Okay. And, and how often will they meet? And how many weeks do you think it will be spread out over?
It's gonna be meeting weekly and probably for the rest of the year.
Very good. And well, I want to thank the teachers who have volunteered to run this for the whole year.
That's wonderful, really.
So all four grades?
Yep.
So all of the materials that are needed will be covered by that stipend from WGBH PBS?
WGBH PBS, a hundred dollars. It'll be field testing, um, Mission Solar System. It's one of the Design Squad Nation websites, um, modules. And our new science teacher. It's one of the Design Squad Nation websites modules, and our new science teacher is basically bringing to us what she created at her other middle school, and she's pretty excited about it.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, that Design Squad Nation.
Isn't that wonderful?
Really good, it's an amazing resource.
It really is.
And I love the name of it.
Mrs. Toott, our related teacher named it.
That's nice.
And the, the videotaping, will that be aired by PBS, or will they give us a copy so we can put it on a website?
They are definitely coming down, and obviously those families who've opted out with videotapes or photographs, they'll, they'll honor all of that, but, yeah, we're hearing that it, we just may be on TV.
That's great.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Hopefully not on the same channel as we are.
Somehow, I think that's.
Somehow, yeah, I think that would win.
Think we'll go lose that deal.
Can't sleep.
They'll be turning that channel from us, I'll tell you.
Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, and thank the teacher very much for this initiative, that's wonderful.
This is really good.
Yeah, there's a lot of good things happening at the middle school, very exciting. Okay, Mr. Barrett?
The next is a request, and we've talked about this with the committee, in order to help improve the quality and the variety of our professional development opportunities, I'm asking permission that we be allowed to form a district PD advisory committee, and that you have the background to support you. And again, this will be to get input from our teachers. It's advisory, the committee's not obligated to anything that may be recommended, but we certainly want to hear, and it's a two-way street, we want to hear just what the needs are, but also what we're offering, you know, does it mean, you know, whether, you know, the teachers, you need to help support them in the process.
That's a great idea, Bill.
It is, really.
And I think that, you know, we, we were out of the PD business for so long, regrettably, that this is a great way back in.
This is very exciting to be back in, yes, very good.
No, I don't, I'm just, it's more notification.
Okay.
You don't need it.
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
The next is, this, again, this is more of a notification to the committee. Ride has set up a request for proposals for districts that are considered, would consider having all day K in their districts. And at first, when I looked at it, the elementary principals looked at it, I got emails from everybody, hey, we got to do this, and it'd be a great idea, because they're not paid for it. Well, if you look at the RFP.
Fifteen thousand.
It's really, it's great that they're trying.
Right.
Not to dismiss it, but it's not anywhere near what we would need as far as about 180, 190.
Staffing costs.
Even if you back down, and we looked at it briefly, back out your midday runs, it still would cost us about 180,000, 190,000.
District-wide?
I'm sorry.
For district-wide?
Yeah, and that's assuming we don't get, we wouldn't get any more K's than we have.
So they're just offering to do the 15?
Yeah, they're just, but they're doing things like supplies, textbooks.
Furniture.
You know, maybe help with some facilities issues if the district.
So those sort of fixed, one-time.
Yeah.
And it's the first year, and you have to commit to five.
Yes.
It's 15,000.
For five years, so I just, so if people came to you on the street, you know, you were.
Well, it sounded very exciting.
It did.
I was so happy.
Well, and all day K is certainly something.
We are, we've discussed.
We've discussed a lot, and we think we should have, and.
Value to us. But, for example, I was over at Newport on Friday for an EBEC meeting, and I toured their new elementary school, which is quite beautiful. They have eight K's, and their population district-wide is about equal to ours. We have the capacity for six, you know, space-wise, so, and that number that I just gave you, about 180,000, would be just for three teachers, you know.
Do we have the classroom space?
Yeah, we still have the case. Some people, you know, our pre-K would have to get moved to Pecassett, we'd have to find space for that. But even if we had the room for the three, and we had the money, what about, what we don't know is how many kids are out there in private schools.
Come back.
Oh, yes.
So it could be a space, it could be a space issue, and even no money, so.
So the five-year commitment for us would be 900,000, and they would give us 15?
Right, assuming, and that's assuming we.
Our K numbers don't go up.
That we had no movement, you know, in, in our numbers, so, just so you'd be aware that that's out there.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything on that?
We have announcements?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
A request?
I, I just have a request that maybe, I mentioned this quite a while ago. But would like to see the results of AP.
Oh, yeah.
That's right, yeah.
And if we can get the comparison, I don't know how difficult this would be, to get it from other districts, how many students pass at level statistically.
Well, we have the state average, and we have the national, the worldwide average.
And including potentially some private schools.
I don't know if I can access them.
I think that's on Ride.
I don't know.
Private schools?
No, probably.
I don't think private schools will report that to us.
You can, you can see how many.
They might provide this friendly information, because that's probably good advertising for them.
They may have it in their annual reports, I probably did.
Because the question is, how many students, because part of the, part of the assessment of effectiveness of AP courses is how many students pass this test, because we all prepare them for the same test. And if, for example, 60% or 70% in particular school pass this test, it's a level three, and in our case, only 2%, we know that this discrepancy is too big, and the question's not really improved by.
You can get the number of students who taken, I think, passed the AP exams by district on Ride, but probably not for the private schools.
Ride, Ride's usually a year behind.
Yeah.
And you could maybe look at those districts where we sort of, we compare by socio-economic.
I can do the five districts.
But for AP courses, there is no socio-economic, too much, because why are they in AP courses?
Well, you would have, well, you would have more, you would have a larger pool.
But we are not talking, we are talking about percentage of the students, if we only have 10 students in AP calculus, and they have 70, and if 50% of 70 passed it at level three, and 2% or 5% here, then, then we're completely.
But again, an AP score is important, it's an important, again, it's like any score, you have to keep it in perspective to the whole. And normally, we do relatively well to other districts where historically AP calc, and is another one where we struggled the last couple of years, but LEAs to ELAs, the world language, we do extremely well. So, you know, we do, we'll have that information, but remember, we have a small, we also have a small smattering of offering, we don't offer that many sections.
Isn't this the first year we kind of insisted they, or not insisted, but we encouraged everyone to take it, was that?
It's been in the handbook now, I believe, three years.
Oh, it has, okay, good, so that'll be good to see.
It's a requirement.
But we'll get that.
Right.
I'll do my best to.
Okay.
Our averages nationally, globally.
Charter schools might be.
You know, they, they converge from above to below, you know, like Doug was saying, we've got the three to five year averages.
Okay, good. Take a look at them again.
Whether Tibercombe or Bishopstane is the same group of students.
Under announcements, we're clear, November 7th is the Hall of Fame dinner, Mrs. Larson mentioned it, Mr. McKinnon invited everybody. Write an email, it's November 7th, that covers, is everybody's welcome to. Buy a ticket. That's all I have, right?
I had a, I had a correction from our last meeting. It was reported at our last meeting that 47% of Pecassett fourth graders scored proficient on this year's science kneecap, and the correct number is 35.6%, with the state average at 41%. So I just wanted to announce that we'll be revisiting the topic of fourth grade science kneecap scores at our next meeting, will it be though?
We can, but Mrs. Black.
Or. Or at a future meeting?
At a future.
Okay, okay, at a future meeting, so that we can talk about how best to increase, yeah, increase scores where they've been flat.
We have that information that you requested, so.
Okay, thank you.
Share the hope.
Mrs. Paulus, do you have something?
When's our, when's our meeting in November?
We have two, November 12.
So homecoming is the ninth?
It's the weekend, actually, it's the long weekend.
The ninth?
It's February 12th, today.
So everyone come to the game.
Also, does the committee want to meet the Tuesday before Thanksgiving? Because that's our next, that's the second day. That's also parent-teacher conference, the night, no, the afternoon, excuse me, that's our second day of parent-teacher conferences. Distorted.
We haven't.
You haven't met them.
No.
That's the day we'll, that'd be the first meeting after we get bids for the facility study.
It may not decide now, just for thought.
Yeah, maybe at the first meeting we'll have a better idea if there's something pressing that we want to.
Yeah, because the bids are going to come back.
Right, that we want to look at.
Or you just take one item.
Take one item, or maybe, maybe you meet on the 21st, or just to do that or something.
Yeah, the next one.
Okay, we could.
I'd be in favor of meeting, but we can certainly decide later.
Yeah.
Just food for thought.
Maybe just move the which day, so we can deal with the. Mr. Fazek?
Um, just recently, an online news source for local classrooms, we will do ranking studies, we find the time of statewide school data, the Tiverton High School students and staff received a very favorable ranking in a recent study regarding high school discipline. The ranking is based on percentages, which are determined by suspension incidences versus student population, and out of 52 schools, we were within the top 10 on the lower end of the scale, which is a good thing. So just want to congratulate the students and the staff.
Thank you.
It's a nice surprise, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily surprise me, we have good kids and nice kids at the high school, and we have staff that do a lot of interventions, you know, a lot of volunteer programming to keep kids involved, and we try to use suspension as a very last outlet.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just remember, there was a big snap for a couple of years ago, where.
The, the data was misreported.
They reported it twice, and we included the in-house.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's good, thank you very much. Yes?
Just, it actually ties into this, although unintentional, we're in the month of October, and we're doing our state upload for our data, for the initial upload period, so all of our reports have been uploaded, and now we have between now and the beginning of November to do any error checks on all of the data.
Okay, thank you. Everybody else?